Yupper.
All right, it's nine twelve, uh, make a motion to come back in the session, you can have a second?
A second. I got this one.
Both, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous, can't be improved. Okay, so, before we get to that, so we've covered that, uh, events, community picnic, okay, so, what?
What we're gonna talk about, John's pace of cheeky now?
Oh, that's right, that's all we have.
I'll be nice.
All right, so, is that under your report?
It was gonna be if you didn't.
Yeah, let's do your report, let's go.
Oh, well, okay.
Makes sense.
Um, well, fir- first of all was, um.
John's allocation.
Previously, uh, Jason and Corey were both split fifty fifty between general and water. The DPW superintendent salary was split each payroll. Um, so I didn't know if that was continuing since that's the way we kinda budgeted for this year, or if we wanted to switch things around with, because John is, John is normally, previously his salary mostly came out of, um, sewer in general, until it got to snow time. Um, so I didn't know if we've, we needed to do like a three, like a one eighty or, you know, a partial like, this one's going to here and this one's going to here and.
Who's doing sewer now, is John, he's doing?
John and Toad, I think, are both doing sewer.
John and Greg are doing sewer, right?
Now we have a water trainee and Toad doing the water, can John really come out of water?
He's still supervising the water department then?
Yeah, doesn't really, it doesn't really matter where the funds come from, as long as they're being paid appropriately is all, right?
Yeah, the waters are.
Well, you gotta, I mean, you gotta be able to, when you say it doesn't matter what fund, you gotta do it by what the budget was.
Okay.
I mean, if, if John primarily came out of sewer and general.
Right.
And Jason with water, I would split it between, say fifty percent general and then twenty-five and twenty-five.
That's what John suggested at one point here last year.
I mean, I don't know how much John is doing out of sewer now, but.
He still oversees it.
Right, but I mean, when it, he used to do all the testing and so forth, I don't know if he's still doing that. So I would do fifty, twenty-five, twenty-five, for now, and see how it works out.
He still does the reporting.
Right.
At the end of the month, so.
Yeah.
If that, that works within.
Yeah, and then we'll see what happens at the end of the fiscal year.
Okay.
Okay.
Cause it was to my knowledge that most of the water trainee has to come out of the water front, correct?
General and water.
The wat- yeah, the water hours are coming out of water.
Water in general.
Okay.
It, it depends on what work he's doing.
What's Greg, uh, what's his allocation?
Same with, um, same with Greg, he's got general hours, he's got water hours, and he has some sewer hours.
Hourly, so whatever the number of hours is, it's fun.
So that just takes, changes out, gets paid that way?
It's paid out of general and sewer, depending on how many hours he's working.
Now he's general sewer water. Toad used to be general water sewer, no, they, they flip-flop those.
I guess I'm just confused cause the classification of water operator, as opposed to labor.
Yeah.
Was like, more of that probably comes from water now, correct? Cause that's the classification?
Well, as far as getting paid, it's just being taken out of what appropriate budget. So, whenever they work water, they're getting paid for water, and when they're doing sewer, they get paid for sewer, and then, most of the funds are in general to pay for the employees.
But I mean, like, you're working water, right?
We all work everything, really, but.
Right, but I mean, you keep track of your hours.
Yeah, they keep track of their hours, and Johnson makes the hours to me.
And that's what comes out of water, and things that come out of sewer.
And, yeah, Tom, I think, oh, you're all general and water this period, this pay period. Um, John, I'm trying to find out where to take him from, and then Toad had general sewer and water in his hours this period.
Right, but there are hours, the only one that.
They're all hourly.
Is John's salary.
Right, yeah.
Just, I mean, feel like, but that's fine, I'm just asking, would it make any sense to just split the three of us up equally between three accounts? Or just, I mean, cause like I said before, we all do a little bit of everything.
But it wasn't budgeted.
No, I, I don't, I'm saying like moving forward, next budget year kinda thing.
Well, next.
Well.
I'm just asking.
I guess my concern is, like at the county, for instance, I'm a bridge construction worker, because it's civil, civil service, and then we have labor.
Yeah.
So if there's any overtime that has to be done, obviously the labor has to be gone to first. And it's the smart man, I think, because at our level, that person's cheaper.
Yeah.
But also because of civil service, the labor performs the work, so let's see, in the winter, when there's overtime to be done, the labor has to go, it goes to the labor. He has to refuse it for it to get passed on to anybody else, so.
But we have a union bargaining agreement, so both guys have to utilize them.
So it's not because of the classification, I, that's what I'm saying, I know you have a union bargaining agreement, but it doesn't violate civil service? Because of that, that's why we do it there.
No, union bargaining agreement is what we have to adhere to, so we don't have grievance filed against us.
We can have grievance filed against you for civil service too.
Yeah.
As far as I know, it's because the guys are on the same level.
That's why when we were hiring for the position, that's what Jason and I were trying to stress, is that, a classification and a job title is a lo- is, is a big deal.
Yeah, well, they're both utilized for water at this point in time, and for snow, I mean, Greg's gonna be doing the sidewalks like he has, you know, I mean. John, John will take care of that, that sounds.
For some reason, you don't need both guys doing the overtime.
Then whichever one's available.
If Toad is the labor, he'll have to go in first.
Not necessarily, cause if you're talking about hourly, he, Tom would be lower than, than Greg.
Well, they'd also go into that classification for us.
When we talked about John's split though, which account, isn't that how it all?
It, you, John's hours mostly were general and sewer previous.
Let's just take care of that, and then move on to the next thing on the agenda.
That was, previous was mostly general and sewer. So, if you want, I can, I can do what Gene suggested and do fifty general, twenty-five water, twenty-five sewer.
That sounds great, I'll make a motion for that.
Well, does it need to be a motion for it? No, that's just how we're doing it.
Okay.
Okay.
What else you got, Rose?
Um, you mentioned sending a highlights, uh, frequently asked question on the new water law.
Yeah.
Um, were we gonna try and do that with the next bill, which is going out for September first? If it's not being passed until the twenty-fourth?
Yeah.
It's only gonna give you a week.
I was gonna say, September for, oh, we'll do it the same day as the law, right?
Um, I would mail it, who knows, August. It'll be mailed, uh, the twenty-eighth.
Or maybe the next month.
No, I'm sorry, it'd be mailed the thirty-first, is when the bills would be mailed, so I would need it to stuff like twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight. You just mentioned sending it, and I didn't know if we were talking about doing it like immediately, or if we wanted to.
It would be nice to let them know what's in their new water wall, that way too, if the ones that don't show up to the public hearing will read it.
Will know what's going on?
Yeah.
So, okay, so we'll shoot for September first, though?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, the last thing I have are the terminations for the out of town. Um, I had one person pay.
Oh, yes.
And, um, I had one extension request from, uh, resident Cheryl Smith. Um, she's asking for an extension until August nineteenth. So she's asking for nine more days.
Okay. Would there be any late penalties under the current water wall that she'd have to pay?
Not under the current one.
I don't see an issue with that, is there anyone else?
So, it's okay to grant that to her?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And who paid?
Uh, Delman.
Okay, and the other ones, no?
No.
So then we need to go forward with the process of, they're all out of towners.
They're all outta, outta town.
Um.
I don't, I can check with John and see who can be shut off.
Yeah.
Um.
I mean, we just follow the current law?
Yeah, I mean, my guess is probably mostly none.
I was gonna say, isn't that why we had the issue, because it couldn't be shut off?
Primarily, and that's why we have the penalties inflicted, so that, that they will want to, unless they want to just have a thousand dollar bill and then go to.
Yeah.
Court for that.
Um, so I would, I can check with John tomorrow and give him the list and let him know that, if, if that's what you want him to do, he can try to shut off who he can.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
If nobody else has contacted us that they're gonna take care of it or anything like that, that would be, I mean, we'd give them notice and everything, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so, that's just common sense there. So let's take it there.
That's all we got.
That's all you got?
Yeah.
Dean Flager wrote one. Uh, one other thing on water, we have three or four accounts out there that the individual went, they went to the county, and then the county, catch me up on this, Rose.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the county returned them.
County returned them and said the individual was responsible for them.
So the county wanted to pay the levy for it?
Right, and a person did pay some of it, but we still have three or four accounts out there that.
Yeah, I think they had eight accounts total.
Yeah.
And they've paid four of them, and they still have four accounts outstanding.
They haven't been paying.
They haven't made a payment in the last probably a year.
But I think the individual, did he go bank, or I don't remember what the case was? The county took the property back or something, didn't they? Um, I don't know if it's something Jay can look into, um, they own water and sewer.
Probably two thousand-ish?
Yeah, probably.
Total between the four accounts?
Are these in town or out, in the village?
In the village.
My understanding, and I did read the law on this, is that the village is not allowed to go after them individually, but the only recourse the village has is to put it as a lien on their property. So if the county said, we're not paying you, and we're not turning it into a lien this year, you'd have to wait until next year.
I'm not sure if they own the property.
These people don't own the property.
The new property owner would be the, you can still put the lien on the property, and it becomes the new property owner's responsibility. And the new property owner should have asked the previous owner when they bought it for a water guarantee.
They bought it through county auction.
Ooh.
And they own water and sewer.
And that should have been disclosed at the auction, correct? If they're buying it.
I don't have anything to do with the county auctions, I don't know what the procedure is.
I think.
I don't know if that extinguishes the notice made or not.
Then you can find out?
Yep.
All right. So any other insist with water and sewer?
My guess is that we can still put the lien on, but I'm not positive.
I believe when you buy something that the county has as its, where it is, at your wish.
It's everything that it is?
It is, so, if there's lien out there, yeah, they're yours.
It's your life, wouldn't you buy it? Okay. All right, moving on, uh, events, we got the community picnic that is this weekend.
Mm-hmm.
Everybody's gonna be there in attendance, right?
Yeah, they're actually gonna help working stand probably. There's been a huge lack of.
Involvement?
Yeah. Um, I was talking to Bobby Joe tonight, and, you know, that we can help run some of these stands or figure out a schedule or something.
What stands are there, are they talking about, are there stuff like that?
They're having games for the kids and stuff.
Oh, okay.
It's not just showing up to kiss the babies, they're gonna need.
Well, I'm running a youth tournament that night. Um, I'll be there.
Well, I'm saying, I think, what'd she say, sis said two, they're looking to kick off, I mean.
Two, look, uh, eleven, eleven they were opening, but two would be the busy time.
I thought they were setting up at eleven, I thought that's what she said. I could be wrong, but still, I mean, even in the morning, they're gonna need help, you know, getting set up. I could let you know what my schedule is. It's the same way.
Well, you feel like him, you're in Kenny now?
It's gonna be all day.
What's going on in Ottawa on Saturday?
They're trying to check the market.
They're having a big event.
East, they're having a family fun day. East thought it was having a blueberry social, so odds are they might not need their. Well, it's, it's not looking good, uh, Robin Gunclum is having an athletic clamp bake.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Everybody.
And the softball team is having a golf tournament.
So they, I mean, the, the, those three that have ran this, or four I should say, that have ran this picnic, and that are going, it's been advertised for how long? And then.
Exactly.
And then everybody else is, is, is coming out, I mean, that's unfortunate, but.
Yeah. Even the people I'm saying in our community, I mean, they don't see that there's gonna be a lot.
Well.
Like you said, involvement, they're gonna need help with a lot of aspects of it.
Well, somebody down there for.
I mean, I'll pretty much be there probably all day long, between the setup and bumps around here and there. There's a lot of things going on though, so, if anybody can help, it would definitely be appreciated.
Yeah. All right. Um, and there's something going on, isn't there something going on Friday night too? We haven't made a prepared.
Uh, there's a softball, there's a softball tournament, it starts, it actually starts tomorrow night before shoes, uh, unless that's canceled, we have, it'll probably be Thursday, and then I think the finals for that will be Saturday. Softball tournament, which they've had the summer league kinda going on, that goes in and out this, that's been going on, the finals for that will start Friday night and end Saturday. Um, there is, I believe, total war gonna be going on.
There's, they got a bunch of events planned.
Yeah, um, but yeah, it actually pretty much starts tomorrow night, weather permitting.
All right, uh, there's nothing for insurance, cell phones, senior systems discussed, is there anything for ambulance?
Actually, yes, um, to the best of my knowledge, from what I took from, I think Little Valley is canceling their volunteer ambulance service, is my understanding. And if, and if it doesn't start getting, I mean, if you guys know of anybody that might be interested in volunteering, signing up, driver, EMT, anything, we could be finding ourselves in that same boat down the road to where we have to go through a paid service.
Like a wander?
I mean, it's just, you know, it's, it's all volunteer now, it's nice, I mean, it saves people a lot of money to do it this way, but it's just the lack of involvement. So.
Are they letting that be known?
We just discussed it at the meeting, uh, the other day. Um, they have, imagine they're trying on their end of like people know, but.
So many hours involved.
No, there is, they have a train now, I am responding. Basically, you sign up for a duty day where it's, you're on call, and you'll be the one to respond, I mean, the best thing is, is I think, I think there's two drivers right now, and I'm still in train, so.
So what do you do if you're just, if you're just a driver? Cause I used to be an EMT, and I used to be on it.
You just drive?
But I, is that all you do, you don't do anything with the?
You do all the list and stuff like that, but nobody, I don't get the, you know, I'm not sticking needles in people's arms or anything like that. Cause I actually transferred me over from the fire department, and, cause I've, I'm already in the fire department, so I didn't have to become a voted member, I just transferred over, so I'm still on call. I can drive for them, so that I can get on the duty roster, but I still have to do like a couple times of, um, training, you know? Make sure I'm like that, you know, boss and patient and all that. Yeah, it's a lot of dedication, I mean, if you go to the hospital, depending on what hospital they want to go to, you know what I mean, yeah, exactly, you know, you could, you're talking maybe five six hours a night. You're gonna get paid for it, but, same time, it says you're a little in there.
Yeah.
You know, it's nice to know somebody's going, so.
Right, uh, what about library, anything from them?
No, just the usual, that, uh, probably next month, they're gonna be reaching out, trying to find the board members to take it over, so that something may add their hat.
Oh, for the library themselves?
Yeah, they're all getting, uh, up there and maybe.
Gotcha. All right, let's go on to correspondence, all right, so the first one is, uh, is he no water usage? And he wrote that the top units of Mill Street have not been occupied since Persus, they have been in a state of repair and refurbishment. Ergo, there has been no water usage, usage until this time. So currently he has what, a hundred fifty-eight dollars thirty, thirty-three cents?
Mm-hmm.
Did he?
Plus penalty at this point.
Plus penalty. Is everybody's gonna put on this, what, we're, the law would, I mean, in regards to the water law, the current one.
If it were the new one, the new one would say you have to ask for it to be shut off, or you, or you pay it, it's as simple as that. I think the old one says that too, but I'm not a hundred percent.
I'm pretty sure the old one says that as well.
Yeah.
You can't wait till you get a bill and say, hey, I didn't have this service, and, no, I, I don't, I shouldn't have paid, it's, let us know. You have to be, I mean, same with, what are you gonna do if you go to any other utility worker or utility company, like Verizon or National Fuel, National, whatever.
Yeah, there has to be a shut off request.
You have to, you have to have a shut off request, so, I would say that we'd stick to what the law states, and that he would have to pay it, and then notify us if he's not, this would say that he's not using it, so.
So, I have sent him on other occasions, he's requested the water application to terminate, but I've never gotten it back.
Well, if there's an actual application.
So I can, I'll send him another application and tell him that he needs to fill it out.
Yeah. Are we all on the same page on that?
So what we're saying is, we send him out an application, that becomes the effective date when he returns it.
Yeah.
Okay, and this is victim precipitated, really, I mean, that's, that's really what it is, is the responsibility of the landowner to terminate it, it's not our responsibility, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I have no problem with that. Is there something simple that can be typed up, saying, please fill out, or else, you're not technically?
Yeah, I can send a letter with the application, yeah.
Maybe it needs to be that bold?
Yes, sir.
This has to be filled out, or else, you're gonna take a mean bill.
Yeah. Okay.
Now, what about for Gene?
There is, dude.
Wait. Is, is there a way that, in the future, that Gene can get fitted in earlier, so that he can get home earlier, can we do that in the future? I mean, after forty years, I don't, I think he's suffered through enough, I would like to see that in the future, we get, we move him earlier into the meeting, okay?
Oh, you're complaining, you weren't banker hours.
I get that, sis. I'm, I'm trying to look out for his interest, okay, let's, let's consider this.
I already remember that.
I'm sure, all right.
Goodness. Thanks a lot, Jacob.
Uh, next up is Sue Perry's complaint in regards to one thirty-five Jefferson not being mowed, it has been, so that has been resolved. Uh, time order cable expiry agreement, same old thing, then, uh, environmental facilities corporation, uh, draft for CWSRF and DWSRF. Uh, those are for grants, uh, right now we are doing DWSRF, and we're also applying through, um, let's see, what's it, what's the one we're really going through right now, uh?
Not the revolving fund, but the additional one that they're applying?
Yeah, the additional one where it's two million or sixty percent, um, so I know right now, I don't believe we're doing, yeah, cause this one isn't due until, um.
Environmental facilities?
Is that it, no?
No.
No, I don't think that's it, I forget the name of it, I'll find out tomorrow from Jake though.
The CEBG?
No, no, that's part of it, that's part of it, CEBG is part of it. Community Development Block Grant, that's six hundred thousand dollars. I'm sorry, all right, so, there's nothing in regards to that, uh, as of yet with Jake and all of them that I've discussed with. Um, municipal, municipal solutions, you know, from Mary Chapel regarding, um, the grants. She did find, she did send to Jake, which I'll be receiving tomorrow, um, what the cost is on the two lines for the, for the grant itself, um, and looking at which way is more financially responsible, and also what is, what is it? What's more responsible, what we can actually take on, uh, there, some concerns though are how it affects grading and all that, so there are even more rapport on the water project in regards to all that at the work meet or, um, session. Um, Office of Community Renewal regarding round announcements, uh, I didn't see anything that we could really apply for, did anybody else from them? I never, did you see anything from that, you know, from that?
Yeah, it was all housing, I, I looked up, I looked up and sent out to everybody that there was, it really didn't apply.
Yeah, it's for housing. No, it didn't. That was the one that just sent a forceful one, I answered. Uh, Snowbrook Water closing for business, so what, they're the ones that provide the, the water here, right?
Yes, the bottled water out in the front room, um.
Would we just be better off just to get, like, I don't know, go to Walmart and, and get gallon jugs from them?
Yeah, we can get either, we can get flats of bottled water, or we can get the big bottles, um, Joy thinks the big bottles have a tap in them, so it'd just be a matter of setting it out, um, on a table where people could access, you know, the tap, just like they do the, the water cooler now. Um, I'm not positive, the old water company before Snowbrook, um, was the company that provided the water cooler to us, that the water jugs go into. I'm assuming they're gonna come and pick that up, um, they're the ones that brought it to us, so, we don't pay any kind of rental on it, so I'm assuming it's theirs.
We may end up with it.
Could possibly with them closing, and maybe they don't care, um.
They're not selling the business, so I doubt that they want any of the.
Yeah, they're not selling the business, the, what's happened, the reason they may not take it back is there's freon in there, and the cost of fifteen dollars each to recycle.
Okay, it says that if we are.
So we may end up with that.
Yeah, it, it says if we have a rental machine, we can purchase it, which will be added to our final bill, but we don't rent it. We, we don't pay them anything for the machines.
Yeah, so.
I would think, cause we just, we discussed Coligan in there, they're.
Yeah, I, I did, um, contact Coligan for a quote, they were, um, kind of, kind of expensive for what we use. Um, you're paying nine dollars, over nine dollars per bottle for one to two bottles, um, a month. Um, seven dollars bottle water, bottle deposit on each of those, so that's another fourteen dollars a month. Um, routed delivery, you get charged for delivery, three fifty, that's gonna be what, it is.
Couldn't we just get it at Walmart?
I, I think that maybe just getting it locally and, and bringing it in, I can check and see what Dollar General or Brooks has available.
Oh, yeah.
Well, if they don't take the cooler or the jug, you're not just gonna fill it up out of tap.
We can't use water out of the tap here.
Well, I was gonna, I was gonna not advise it anyway, like I said, mold grows in my toilet, so, I would, I don't put it in my belly.
Well, I drink the water every day.
I drink the water every day.
I'm, I'm good with it.
Well, that explains a lot.
Outsiders, what can you do on that? Uh, so, are we just gonna go with, uh, to?
So, I was, is local?
Local's fine, yeah, if you go from Brooks.
Yeah, I, I thought I would see what was available at Brooks and.
See, if, if you could contact, uh, Michael and see if he would, uh, is it Mike? Is it the, is it the Mike Brooks that moved?
Mike Brooks?
Yeah, it is Mike, right, yeah, you could contact him, see if he could cut us a deal of some sort, I'm sure he could, I'm sure he would.
Have to figure up the gas to go get it.
Yeah. Uh, do we need to make a motion for that? No, we can just go, cause it's not expensive as far as appropriating funds, right?
Yeah, I went into the other pages, and there was like nothing from our companies, it was like, Coligan out of Bradford, and I think there might have been one other place, but, yeah, but really, somebody wants a business to go into?
Yeah, all right, uh, then we got two complaints, one from Dick and one from Tricia Bezzell. Uh, Trish wrote, overgrown with weeds, shoe mac, overgrown too. And then Dick wrote, what portion of sidewalk uneven compares progress by electric wheelchair? So, Gary's gonna go and take a look at that later on this week, he said he would, and, and court back on that. Uh, we did receive the letter from, uh, Department of Interior for Fish and Wildlife, uh, accepting what we are proposing for the tree cuddle and all of that, so that's good, that's, do you need the original, or can I go ahead and trip that?
Um, I've got an original as well, they sent them to both of us.
Oh, they did, all right. Um, next up, Rose put in there is the Kent County Municipal, Municipal Clerks Association meeting on September sixteen, which you're attending, right?
I am.
Okay, uh, Mr. Freeman's gonna be there, um, and.
It's at West Valley Fire Hall?
West Valley, oh, I know where that is, okay, on two forty, and, everybody's invited, right?
Yep, it's twenty dollars a person, and, um.
Just gotta write RSVP by the fourth.
Yeah, um, and you're letting the Patty Dashma from Ashford, out of Ashford, she's a clerk there, she's taking the RSVPs on that.
Well, if anybody wants to attend, they can just let you know, and then.
Let me know, yep.
What day does the sixteen fall on, do you know?
Uh, it'll be a Wednesday, third Wednesday of September, I believe.
Okay. Uh, oh, business, uh, pro zoning law amendment that's still tabled because of the zoning, when do they meet next, Rose?
Uh, Wednesday.
This Wednesday? Uh, do you think they'll get to that, and we can, yeah, okay, uh, water.
We've been working on the sign, zoning.
That's right.
They're doing that first?
Yeah.
Is it the, um, what sign is that?
The sign for.
Oh, the sign.
The sign, yeah.
What's the deal with, I was asked about Jason Denver's site?
That, I don't know, I haven't spoken, I have talked with Diane recently, um, where she wants to put it, they have the, they have the right and everything, but they settled out of town towards going out on two fifty-three north, at three fifty-three south, um, the part they were looking at was where Victory Tavern Apple is. However, this little corner part that they want us to put it on, actually belongs to a guy in Hamburgh, and so she either just had to contact him, or is looking at another spot to put it. Oh, I think she was gonna talk with Sis in regards to that, uh, so what about putting it there, I mean, they, I don't see the Blackmoors having an issue with that, so. I haven't heard anything from it, as soon as we have to go ahead, then our guys are gonna be able to go ahead and put those. I haven't heard anything from it, as soon as we have to go ahead, then our guys are gonna be able to go ahead and put those, uh, up and we'll be good to go. So, um, the water project, as we already discussed, um, we have the meeting tomorrow to discuss more regards to financials. Old Elementary School, that's gonna be September, is that when, um, J C?
Yeah, I talked to the, her office, and if you remember, she had the C F A, and then she said she was going to go on vacation on her boat.
Yeah.
And when I contacted their office, they said that she would be in contact, but we would look at September.
September's work session, right?
Yeah.
Alright, so we'll see September's work session for firm. Um, trash pickup, where do we leave off with trash pickup?
Uh, we put it on the wayback burner, but I was gonna approach West Valley with, uh, the big garbage, big garbage day, instead of garbage, we would.
Oh, yeah.
An RFP on that.
I have not done that yet.
Yeah, we're talking about an RFP on that, and since we're already gonna be meeting on something, we can talk about it then.
Yeah.
Alright, so Bo, you're gonna be working with Jay on it then?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, go with Jay. Uh, senior building, we already discussed, police ticket revenue, we'll find out more next week, uh, go, I haven't heard anything from the town. Uh, so I'll be attending that meeting to see.
Now, just to, not to interrupt, but, uh, if we do reinforce, uh, the town ordinances, I mean, that's. They're obviously enforceable within the village, that's revenue for the village, is that correct?
Which ordinances?
The, the village ordinances.
Yes.
If they write on the village ordinance, my understanding is that it can be, the, the income.
Oh, you're talking about the debris, the debris tickets?
Yes.
Yeah, but there's several other things, you know, like, uh, disturbing the peace within the village, it could be construed as a town, uh, village ordinance, a violation of that.
Depends how the tickets were.
Disturbing the peace is usually a, a violation of state law.
Okay. It's usually, but if there's one thing in particular, let's say there's a railroad, and railroad goes by, I mean, that's, or. Bad example, um, you know, if, if somebody is doing something in their backyard and we have something that disturbs the peace, characterizes.
Usually written up as a disorderly conduct, which is a state law violation.
Oh, okay.
But there could be a, a local law against various types of disturbances being banned or forbidden or.
I'm just saying, just, it was just a bad example, but there are small village ordinances that.
There, there's very, the, the, most of them are, are parking primarily, it's parking.
Yeah, as long as it's written specifically on village, then the money comes back to the village.
Then we keep it. Yeah, so.
It just depends on how the officer writes it.
Right. So we'll see more tomorrow or, I mean, next week, um, on what the town does, I don't know if they'll have a decision by then, I hope they do. Uh, public committees, uh, has anybody more signed up for these, Rose? Has anybody talked to anybody about, uh, signing up on these and partaking of the committees and help work on it, or is it gonna be just the, this group here just working on? I mean, has anybody talked to anybody about it, I know Billy Ellis is wanting to partake of it, but we need a couple more people to, to get on board or to help steer ship, and I, I know a lot of people have ideas. That's on, I, you know what, I'm gonna really focus on that and see if we can get some people to go in on that. Uh, zoning board of appeals appointment, I haven't, nobody's approached me, um, I spoke to a couple people, for some reason people aren't, are not interested in the zoning board. Uh, so that's still gonna be on Old Business, looking to see if we can fill that, still to this point in time. That's, that's where, and how long is the, 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 the term for, is it five years on the zoning?
Yeah.
Uh, new business policy, wow, only one thing on for new business, holy cow, that's exciting, we're at the tail end of this, guys, we're at the tail end. Alright, new business policies, uh, computer, did everybody get a chance to see the, the computer policy, um, that Joy has worked on? Um, we still need to work on a breach of contract or a breach of security, a security breach, uh, portion that's required by near state technical law, section two oh six, I believe, is. What is, what Joy provided me, so she's gonna work on that and I'm gonna work with her as well, um, but the computer policy, I think it, it fits, is. I'd like to make a motion to go ahead and pass or include this in our village handbook. Did you get a copy, Jay?
You got a copy, Jay, right?
Yeah.
Are you talking about the email you sent out at like four P M?
Yeah.
Yep, I saw that.
Okay.
Uh, keep in mind, if you're making it part of your employee handbook, you can't be binding against union members until you get the new collective bargaining agreement negotiated.
Okay. Under, I understand that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. But other than that, yep, can be effective immediately for anybody who's not union.
Okay, alright, so I'll make the motion, can I have a second?
I'll say it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous, carried and approved.
Worked that with you?
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, the tree policy, we are meeting with Bruce, it's already discussed, he's coming on this, uh, work session, which is what we are probably prim, I believe we're primarily gonna be focusing on, just getting the tree situation taken care of.
And the public hearing.
Oh, and the public hearing, yeah, that's right. Alright, and approval of the abstract, can I get somebody make a motion to approve the abstract, please?
I'll do it.
I'll say it, I'll be right behind you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous, carried and approved. Oh, boy, we're before three hours here, guys, before three hours.
I wanna show a phone about that.
Uh, who wants to make a motion to adjourn at nine forty-eight?
I will.
I'll say it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous, carried and approved, he's over.
It's a short one.
Hey, I was gonna, would be. I was really open for.